Good afternoon and welcome to the November seventeen, two thousand and twenty one City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this remote meeting format we're using as our state and community continue to deal with the COVID nineteen pandemic. This format enables the City Council to meet and take care of business while keeping everyone safe. For work sessions like this one where there is no opportunity for public comment, those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel twenty one, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. And thank you again for joining us. And with that, I am going to first just welcome Counselor Evans. It's good to see you back and we appreciate your 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 returning health and that you're with us. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Good to see you. And with that, I will turn it over to the City Manager for our one and only agenda item today, the CAP two point O update.
Thank you, Mayor. I always look forward to these days where we actually have the full ninety minutes to to immerse ourselves in a in a specific topic, especially one as important as climate and sustainability. So I'm here today with Chelsea Clinton, our Sustainability Manager, who's going to lead us through a presentation and discussion.
Awesome. Thanks, Sarah. Just gonna get my slides up. All right, Mayor Venice, can you give me the thumbs up if that's looking good? Thank you. All right. Well, good afternoon. Good to be here again. Like some of you have noticed, also, I'm fighting the sun here. The blinds are just not cooperating. So here we go. Thanks for having me back again today. As you know, you've heard quite a lot about our climate work already this fall. In September, I gave a presentation on the twelve additional strategies related to the CAP two point O. We also met with E-Web's board and heard about their electrification in September. And last week, you heard from the Sustainability Commission and learned about their work plan for the year, and you also heard from the City Manager, who gave an update on our work with Northwest Natural. Today, I'm here with a number of updates and proposals related to the CAP two point O, and climate will come back one more time before winter break as part of the Climate and Homelessness Funding Strategies work. But as I mentioned today, we're going to focus on those CAP two point O updates and proposals. So for the updates, we'll talk about the implementation plan, the dashboard, carbon offsets, community engagement, and then we'll go over the three proposals in your packet, the mandatory home energy score proposal, energy efficiency for low-income residential buildings, and then business engaged, the business engagement strategy proposal. First up, the CAP two point O Implementation Plan. The Sustainability Commission sent this recommendation to City Council to create an implementation plan in two thousand and twenty, and City Council moved that recommendation forward last December. In presenting the project plan, staff committed to bringing back a formatted table that contains a variety of information that you all should have seen in your packet. The act includes the actions, the lead agency, and the lead department. If it's the City of Eugene action, the status of the action, including the timeline, the climate impact if the action will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and the community impact if the action is more focused on adapting to climate change. The table also shows the estimated cost of implementation, the budget source, and additional comments from staff that we thought the community or City Council would find helpful. Thanks to our Eugene Climate Collaborative Partners and staff from across the city for contributing to this work. It was a really big lift. We appreciate everyone making the time, giving everything else going on. And moving forward, we hope to use this table as a base for our reporting. So we plan to update this table with the status of each action and accompanying our annual report each year moving forward. Next, the climate or the CAP two point O dashboard. The CAP two point O ends its last chapter with a number of methods focused on building community engagement around our climate work, and this is one of those methods. Staff worked with the Sustainability Commission, our internal climate action team, our staff team who works on climate, and Good Company to develop a list of about fifteen metrics the city can use to track progress on the CAP two point O and our climate goals. The dashboard breaks these metrics into four buckets that you probably are very familiar with. The transportation bucket, building energy, fugitive emissions, and resiliency. We plan to update the dashboard annually. Some of the metrics included are gasoline consumed, information on the modes we used to get around town, electricity and natural gas consumed, how much waste we're sending to the landfill, and some information on our urban tree canopy. Next up, carbon offsets. No matter who you talk to about carbon offsets, this is proving to be a really big point of conversation. In fact, Eugene staff are receiving lots of requests to hear about our process from partners and other municipalities across the country that are grappling with ways to meet their their climate goals. Carbon offsets are emerging as one of the tools many jurisdictions are considering as a way to help bridge the gap between where we are and where we want to be. For our purposes, the conversation of carbon offsets begins with the Climate Recovery Ordinance, which states that all city-owned facilities and operations shall be carbon neutral by two thousand and twenty, either by reducing greenhouse gas emissions to zero or through carbon offset projects. Currently, the City of Eugene is not carbon neutral and city-owned facilities and operations due to both technological and financial constraints. So to meet the goal, staff researched and used the carbon offsets while keeping City Council's values around location and quality in mind. The most local project staff could find to meet the criteria in the CRO was the Climate Trust Winston Creek Improved Forest Management Project in Washington State. This project is owned by Port Likely Tree Farms, who set aside ten thousand acres for carbon sequestration. While this project does meet the CRO goal, we hear the community's frustration that the project was not more local, and we anticipate we anticipate similar challenges in finding a local project in the coming year. This is due in part to the limited number of projects that exist in our area, as well as the price per metric ton that local projects cost. Demand continues to increase, and we expect costs continue to will continue to increase as well. Staff are working closely with the Eugene Climate Collaborative Partners, as well as the Eugene Sustainability Commission, to look for ways to go about meeting the CRO goal while investing our dollars closer to home in the future. And last, in this update section, I'll talk about community engagement. The CAP two point O includes four ongoing community engagement initiatives and direction to develop a recommendation for a fifth engagement initiative, the business strategy that I'll talk about later. It also includes the ongoing reporting and accountability components, like the dashboard that I just spoke about. And I outline all of that to start to emphasize that at least two-thirds of the Sustainability Program staff time goes towards supporting these efforts. It's a big lift. We see the impact, and we hope you do as well. So first up, the Eugene Sustainability Commission. I won't spend much time here, as you've heard from this group directly last week. This year, the Commission is focusing its efforts on urban forestry, carbon offsets, resiliency hubs, waste management, monitoring the CAP two point O, and other emerging issues. We really appreciate the Commissioner's time and effort and look forward to working with them again this year. Next, the Equity Panel. You may recall that staff piloted the Equity Panel for the first time with the CAP two point O to receive input on climate priorities from marginalized communities to include in the plan. Staff launched the latest round of the Equity Panel in June two thousand and twenty one, and this time, the panel includes eight organizations that work with frontline communities. Each organization receives a grant for participating and chooses their own representatives who sit on the panel. While it's our second round of the panel, I would consider this another pilot because this time we're asking panel members to weigh in on projects and programs from from multiple projects and programs, excuse me, all of which are part of the city's sustainability and climate work. The transportation planning team, for example, presented and heard feedback on their e-scooter pilot program and their transportation demand management projects. And the planning and development team is working with the panel to hear feedback on the housing implementation pipeline. And the Sustainability Program will also present some topics in the coming year. The panel has met about eight times so far, and will continue to meet twice a month through May of two thousand and twenty two. And we're also really grateful for all the panel members who are serving and sharing their honest feedback and also testing out this new model with us. Next, the Eugene Climate Collaborative. As you probably all remember, the ECC includes twelve organizations that have significant impact on reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and also have significant ability to affect our alter systems to help us to adapt to climate change. We brought the ECC together to support the CAP two point O planning process, and we are continuing to meet now as we work to implement climate solutions across our community. We have staff groups currently meeting to discuss electrification, decarbonization, and energy efficiency of buildings, and we also have another staff group meeting around carbon offsets. And we plan to add an additional three staff groups in the coming months. In addition, executives from all three or from all of these organizations are meeting periodically, including this past September, to affirm each organization's commitment to climate action and continue to learn from and with each other. And then last, the Shift Campaign. The Shift Campaign is a communications tool that we launched in two thousand and twenty and implementing the CAP two point O's individual household and neighborhood action campaign. This tool is used in partnership with the ECC partners to highlight small and sustainable shifts we can all make to to achieve big impacts in reducing our carbon footprint. We use the shift branding in several ways this past year. For Earth Day, we shared echo challenges on the Engage Eugene website to provide ideas for individuals and households to be more sustainable. We also partnered with Four J to create a video to promote sustainable actions in schools. That video can be viewed on the Shift website, which is linked on the slide and also in your packets. So those are the updates I wanted to share today, and then we'll move into the proposals. At our last work session in September, I gave an overview of the CAP two point O twelve additional strategies. And as promised, as part of that workshop session, I'm bringing back a few proposals in alignment with that work and the CAP two point O actions that align. So first, commercial benchmarking and the home energy score. I'm going to start with commercial benchmarking. We have preliminary analysis from our consultants on other cities' approaches to commercial benchmarking type programs, but that research needs a little bit more work before we're ready to share it with you. We plan to bring that information back sometime in two thousand and twenty two with recommendations on next steps. What we do have for you today is a proposal around a mandatory home energy score program. As a refresher, a home energy score is a value given to a home by a certified contracted inspector that estimates the energy-related use, associated costs, and cost-effective solutions to improve the home's energy efficiency. Here in Oregon, the Department of Energy has set up a statewide home energy scoring system that local jurisdictions can leverage to implement these types of programs. Staff presented to City Council on this item in early two thousand and nineteen, and then again this past September. Your packet includes a proposal around a mandatory home energy score program, including some suggested motions to assist with moving the program forward. The motions outline our intended next steps if council does want to move the program forward. So first, we would complete a community engagement process. We know from other communities that it will be important to hear from realtors, home builders, landlords, and others engaged in the sale of homes. And we also want to hear from E-Web, who has experience providing home energy scores through the Score Program, and also the Sustainability Commission and other community members. Based on that feedback, we'll develop a framework and a draft ordinance. As the second motion says, we also would develop an implementation plan, including potential funding sources. And the last motion speaks directly to rental properties using the home energy scores. In that context, has some challenges, and we need to do more exploration to understand how to apply it to rentals. The third motion asks staff to come back with ideas on how to apply the home energy score program to rentals in two thousand and twenty three in alignment with some other work around rental housing standards included in the CAP two point O. Next, CAP two point O Action B two and Strategy five that I shared in the last workshop session. Excuse me, the CAP two point O Additional Strategies proposed the city invest in funding and energy efficiency and electrification, leveraging existing incentives with E-Web and Northwest Natural to do so in a way that minimizes administrative costs. The proposal in your packet starts off by summarizing existing programs offered by E-Web and Northwest Natural. It then provides five different pathways or options to invest in energy efficiency for low-income residential customers. And you may recall the first option from the last work session, staff estimate that by investing an additional two hundred thousand dollars towards energy efficiency with community developments, existing rental rehab program could result in the preservation and improvement of thirty additional units annually at about sixty five hundred dollars a unit. Second, the second option aligns with the city's Service Providers Facility Improvements Program or SPIFI. It's my most favorite new acronym that I've learned. It's actually a commercial program, but it's in here because we felt like it aligned with the sentiment of the action in that the program tends to support human service agencies that serve the most vulnerable in our community. And service, uh, human service agencies frequently operate in older, uh, energy inefficient buildings intended for other uses. So this SPIFI program provides CDVG grants to make improvements to these facilities that have included things like replacements of aging HVAC systems, kitchen and freezer or cooler replacement, installation of energy-efficient windows, and installation of solar showers. So as you can imagine, each building is a unique case. Staff suggested that an investment of an additional one hundred thousand dollars is an example of a dollar amount that would allow for significant meaningful upgrades in many cases. The third option aligns closely with E-Web's work, as well as the city's rental rehab program, and to increase existing incentives in heat pumps in multifamily housing, which provides energy efficiency, heating and cooling. Interestingly, larger multifamily housing complexes are often classified as commercial and therefore don't qualify for as many incentives for heat pumps as other types of housing. So this option would be to invest in the appropriate type of heat pump to upgrade multifamily units, which tend to range from one thousand to four thousand dollars per unit. The fourth option is to replace oil furnaces and primary wood stove heating. According to the two thousand and nineteen American Community Survey, about thirteen thousand residences in Eugene use wood stoves as their primary heat source, and more than five hundred use either fuel oil or bottled tank or liquid propane gas as their primary heat source. So this recommendation is to target incentives to replace those heating sources with heat pumps. And then last, I list the voluntary emissions reduction program that we are working on with Northwest Natural, which y'all heard about last week. So for this proposal, I just want to be really clear that we don't have an identified funding source at this time. So the recommendation is to carry this proposal forward to the December conversation that you'll have around climate funding and consider it among the other priorities that we'll be talking about there. Last, the packet includes a proposal on the CAP two point O Business Engagement Strategy. The proposal outlines four existing programs that support businesses in finding ways to be more sustainable. Those programs include Bring Recyclings Rethink Program, the Mayor's Bold Steps Award, the Green Lane Sustainable Business Network, and the city's Love Food Not Waste Commercial Composting Program. The proposal also outlines recommendations from thirteen businesses that we talked with and three other local governments that have sustainable business programs. There are a couple of recommendations included at the end of that proposal, including to continue to support the city's existing efforts, a Love Food Not Waste Program and the Bold Steps Award Program. And then the second is to create a sustainable business program to support. And some of the things that could do would be to support connecting businesses to existing resources, like the ones I mentioned before, and to support coordination among those existing resources. This program could also support the city's economic development team and integrating sustainability more deeply into existing efforts that could create and support delivery of education materials to encourage sustainable practices through relevant and existing city programs and explore financing options to support businesses as they integrate the more expensive sustainable business practices, such as transitioning fleets to lower carbon options and making energy efficiency and other building decarbonization efforts. And like the last proposal around energy efficiency, I want to be really clear here as well. We don't have a funding source for this, particularly for the second recommendation from this proposal at this time. So my recommendation is to carry it forward to the December conversation and consider it among the other climate priorities. Looking forward to hearing your questions and discussion today. And again, just to to overemphasize, I'm hoping to my recommendation is to carry those energy efficiency proposal and the business engagement strategy forward to December. And then if you want to move the home energy score work forward, there are the three suggested motions in your packet, and that would give us really clear direction to do that.
Thank you very much, Chelsea, for all of your work for this presentation, which is just awesome. And I think we've had some public forum testimony saying nothing's happening. And when you look at this and you look at the implementation plan and you realize how much solid work has happened, it's really a credit to you and to all the staff who've worked with you and the collaborators. So thank you very, very much for this, for this report and this really incredible body of information you've shared with us. I am going to suggest to council that we have a lot to discuss here, and we have a couple of motions. And then we also are circling back. I know that both Counselor Evans and Sarah have other motions to put forward. So I'm going to suggest ask Jennifer to put the motions on the home energy score upfront. So we have that conversation first, then we can go through general conversation and other aspects of this packet and anything else we want to talk about. And then I'm going to reserve some time at the end of the meeting so that we can actually talk about the other motions that are being brought forward by counselors. So with that setup, I am going to turn it over to Jennifer to put those, the first of those three motions on the table.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So I move to direct the City Manager to complete a community engagement process and schedule a work session to share feedback from that process and develop framework of a draft ordinance requiring sellers of residential, single-family homes to obtain and disclose an energy performance rating prior to publicly listing the home for sale and to include the rating in sale listings.
Second? Okay, I am opening this for discussion on this motion, and it looks like I have Alan and then Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Awesome ideas. Thank you for bringing this forward, Chelsea. Good work. I like all the the programs, and I really like moving forward on some other ideas other than Northwest Natural franchise agreement. Seems like that's all we've been talking about for the last two years. So good to see us move forward on some really important initiatives. Full disclosure, the for the home energy scoring program that was developed at ODO, it's administered by the in my division at ODO that I supervise. And and the people that work on that, that will be working with us hopefully are people that are in my division. And so while I just want to be clear about that and be transparent about what's going on there, I have no financial gain or financial stake in in how that plays out. ODO will provide those services to any city that asks. So so there's no perceived or actual conflict of interest in that regard. But I just want to make everybody aware that that does get administered by the people that work for me. And I'm a little biased. I think it's a great program. I think Portland started a bunch of years ago, got national awards for being one of the best in the country in doing it. They're continuing to do it with Earth Advantage as a consultant in Hillsborough, and Milwaukee have done it. And on deck is us, Ashland, Bend, and Corvallis, all are 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 moving forward on this path. And I hope that council will support this idea because I think it's a really good one that we can move forward with. That will end up with some really good information that will help people, especially renters, that are buying houses move forward. Eventually, hopefully, we can get to a rental program. I think it's smart to just start with this, just a program that revolves around the sale of houses. And then maybe with some other funding that comes down the pike from the infrastructure bill and other others federal funding, we can work on the rental side of it. But I think this is a really good start, and I think it's something other communities have done, and it works. And it's something we can do as well.
Thank you. Matt and then Randy.
Thanks, Mayor. Counselor Zelenka stole my thunder in regards to recognizing that that there's a renters are noticeably absent from the the motion on the table. And I don't know if Action B two, the support B two, the support for low income residents to access energy efficiency programs, if that motion would be sufficient to cover renters. But I I just wanted to voice my support for including renters in the mix. It's not going to hold me up from advancing the. Home energy score. Actions that are in front of us today. I do mayor have quite a few comments. Quite a few, I'll limit it to three, uh, and some questions about Chelsea's presentation. But I I I want to respect the time and keep my my comments to the the motion on the table and simply say I will be strongly supporting it.
Great. Yes, and I will give you a second round for your other comments. Randy and then Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I too am interested in the uh, energy home program. Uh, I do like the fact that it's addressing doing this on the front end of a real estate transaction, which I think is very important. Um, I have talked to some people out in the community about this, both realtors and people who have bought and sold real estate. And their concern is just that there's not a choke point in the supply of assessors. So, you know, as we stand a program like this up, should it go forward? And I think it should. Uh, I think we need to take that into consideration, just so that we don't create more problems as we try to roll this out. Likewise, I'd like to add my voice. To councillor Keatings and councillor Zelenka regarding renters and finding a way to support. That part of our population, 52% of our population as well. Thank you. And when I do have other comments, but I'll wait till the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the work. I appreciate the idea and I I do think this is a. I think the program itself is a very good idea. I think it's incredibly useful knowledge and I agree with the way it's structured that people should be able to buy the things they understand what they're buying. I I do have some concerns, though. I know, for example. When I started in the business of of home of of home mortgage loans. Four years ago, the cost of an appraisal was about $595. That a buyer has to pay in this case. Today, that's a lot closer to 1,000 because of the reason that Randy mentioned, which is there aren't enough appraisers to do the work with all of the transactions. So Chelsea, my first question is, how much will this cost per average home to conduct? And I I bet one of my colleagues knows the answer to that. If you don't.
Yeah, so from other communities, I think I have even more specific information in the packet that I don't remember off the top of my head. But other communities, it's between 150 and $300 and and it's market driven. So in Portland, for example, they saw it kind of drop over time as more folks entered the market to be an assessor.
Okay. Well, we can hope that happens here are for for appraisal assessors that that actually the opposite has been true, that it's. They don't have enough to do the work to keep up with the work. I I did not know that the cost was that low. But I will say that. In the time of a housing emergency, and that's a crisis, that's those are words all of us at the table have used once or twice or more. Adding cost to the purchase or rental of a home, because it will be borne by the person purchasing or renting. Seems an unwise idea at this time. It's good information, but is it worth adding? To the already skyrocketing cost of housing? That's the tough question. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other councillors. I see Alan, do you have a second comment you need on this?
Oh, I was just gonna say that in Portland, what we're seeing is about 125 to 150 dollars per assessment. Which I think is a pretty modest cost. That does not include all of the. Complete administrative costs, so it's not completely the market or the complete cost of the program. If we're designing a program that included all the administrative costs, including stuff that Odo does. Probably be in that 150 to $200 range, which is still a pretty modest cost. And we haven't really seen that go up. Actually, we've seen it go down in in Portland. Uh, as it gets bigger and there's more qualified auditors. Competition sometimes works.
Thank you. Uh, Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to offer maybe a counterpoint to councillor Clark's concerns about increasing cost of housing. The impacts of climate change are going to dramatically increase the costs of everyone's housing as we work to try to. Deal with those impacts, uh, as well as raising costs for all of us around all sorts of other things in our lives. So while I appreciate the concern about raising the cost of an individual property. I think it needs to be considered in the context of all the additional costs we are all bearing because of climate change. And I think. Allowing a a potential buyer to understand the energy costs of a particular home they are considering allows them to make a wiser choice. And understand upfront the cost they might face in terms of trying to heat or cool that home. So there may actually be a net gain in savings for the buyer by being able to make that decision with that. Additional information before them.
Okay, Mike.
Yeah, I was just gonna say Claire's last comment there was pretty germane for me. I thought made some good sense. Yeah, it might cost you 150, couple hundred bucks in the purchase of a house, but maybe that leads you to know exactly what needs to be done to. Create savings long term in that. So, okay, that makes some sense. Yeah, I appreciate it presented that way. I wonder, and I guess my question is for Chelsea. Since the largest percentage of. Carbon emissions come from the transportation sector, will we be doing a similar thing with cars at some point?
I don't know of anything in the works around cars. I know you'll be working with the transportation planning team next year on an update to the T S P, and that would be a great place to to plug into something like that.
I know that the D E Q in Portland does emissions measurement before cars get registered up there and we don't down here. Do you anticipate that coming back into play here?
I am not aware of anything around that kind of program.
I I agree with the idea that measuring these things allows us to make more informed decisions. So that's that seems wise, but it it has cross application to that. Thank you.
Okay, if that's the last comment on that, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Excellent. Thank you so much. That passes. Jennifer, would you put the second motion on the table?
Sure, I move to direct the city manager to bring back an implementation plan, including potential funding sources for the mandatory home energy score program.
Second. Any other questions or comments about this? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote all in favor of this motion. Please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Excellent. That passes. And now the third motion.
Okay, I direct the city manager to develop additional home energy score program options for renters in alignment with cap 2.0 action B three.
Second. Any questions or comments about this? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands. Oh, I Mike has a comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just did have a question on that. I apologize. I wasn't asking. So what we're voting on at the moment is simple direction to tell us more before you vote on implementation in any such program. Is that correct? So manager, in in this case. I would want to know two things most germane to me. Number one, who bears the cost and when? And then number two, what will that do? What will be the consequence and the and the? The. The effect, thank you, the effect on vacancy rate. In other words, is it likely to make it go up or down? Is it likely to make, you know, rental property more scarce in some case, otherwise? Just want to know how much harder or more expensive we're making it for renters. Thank you.
Okay, Alan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say on this last motion that. The federal infrastructure bill that bipartisan bill that just passed that Senator Biden or President Biden signed. Uh, as well as the future. The infrastructure bill may have some opportunities for funding around this issue. That we should be aware of and and uh, work with our partners that have already done this, plus also other folks to be able to. Figure this out and implement something for renters. So I think there's a really good opportunity for there to get some funding to figure out some benign issues that are swirling around inside this program.
Yeah, thank you for that comment. All right, if the other, oh, councillor, it's Greg.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to go through all of the infrastructure structure stuff on the federal level. But would this fit under the part one of the infrastructure package that just passed? Or will we would be, would we be looking at? This in part two or some kind of bifurcated way to put the resources together to. Move this forward.
Um.
Chelsea, do you know?
I I'm not an expert on the infrastructure structure package just yet either, so I think it'd probably be best to get back to you on that question.
Okay, that that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. If they know other questions or comments, all in favor of this third motion, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That passes. Thank you very much. Thanks for the discussion and. For moving all of that work forward. That's terrific. And now I'm opening the floor for any other general conversation. I see Claire has her hand up. Claire and then Matt.
So Mary, you want to wait on the two motions that I have? I do have some general comments as well.
My, this is my thought is that I'll watch the clock and give everyone about half an hour to do. Comments on this work and then we'll save the last 20 minutes for your motions.
Great. Um, so yeah, I want to thank staff for the tremendous work. And a clear display of the various strategies and where they're at and. How they might get accomplished. I really appreciate the votes we just took to move forward on a concrete piece of one of those. Uh, strategies that that's been on the list for a while and I'm excited to see us moving forward. I I also. Uh, wanted to reference the infrastructure bill that that the president signed on Monday. Uh, I'm on a mailing list for an advocacy group, Transportation for America, and they had links to a number of pieces of the bill. So there is quite a bit of money for electric charging stations to be. To be installed and I'm confident that our staff will be looking closely at those opportunities and see where they apply to us. But there was something in there I hadn't heard anyone speak to. Uh, that I just really wanted to highlight. It's the Healthy Streets Program. It's I I J A section 11406. And it's a discretionary grant program allocating 100 million annually to local, regional, state tribal governments. For funding projects that addressed urban heat island effects. To include porous pavement changes and improvements to the tree canopy, especially along pedestrian walkways and public transit stops. And considering the conversation we had about our urban forestry program during our last budget cycle. And conversations that those of us who represent Bethel have been having with the active Bethel neighbors out there. I think this is a grant opportunity that we should be looking to take advantage of. I think we have qualifying locations in our community that would benefit from. Getting a hold of some of these grant dollars to improve our tree canopy, which will in turn help us meet some of our climate recovery goals. So I just wanted to call that out. And that's all for right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt and then Alan.
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you, Chelsea, for the update. And there's something I wanted to hone in on that. Owen, thank you, colleagues for advancing the 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 home energy score. That was something that I believe the Sustainability Commission has been championing at the bit for the last four or five years to 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 advance. So it's great, great to see unanimous support. I wanted to talk about Chelsea, the the climate trust element and the carbon offsets. And please put me in in the camp that would love to see those dollars spent locally. But I recognize there are some hurdles and or opportunities. I want to know if you have any thoughts about. Whether it's E web or the state government or federal government. That could be a helpful partner to increase the offset purchase opportunities right here on our own backyard. It's not necessarily a bad thing. Because the we've invested in the Winston Creek beautification project in the state of Washington. Because in a global sense, that's in our own backyard. But I would love if our offset dollars were to enhance a watershed up the McKenzie or or the Willamette. Or or keep our our dollars a little more local. Could you comment on that, please, Chelsea?
Yeah, absolutely. So the Eugene Climate Collaborative Partners are working on this as best we can. So in particular, E web, Northwest Natural are a part of that group, and they both have different sorts of opportunities that feed into creating carbon offsets. We also have University of Oregon supporting E web and researching different options as well, very locally. That said, it's pretty expensive to get these projects up the ground. It takes some time. So I don't want to over promise here and say and say there's going to be something available immediately, but we are working on that locally to see what we can do. And then in terms of the the state or the federal government, I'm not. I don't have a clear sense of what role they would play, these these projects. Get developed because there there's a market opportunity is my understanding. So we'll continue to work with the climate trust and others to to understand that better. But I think the other opportunity in front of us is the Eugene Sustainability Commission is looking at this issue as well. And they have a great reputation of coming up with creative solutions. So I'm excited to see what they bring forth this year.
Great, thank you. I'm going to channel my inner Betty Taylor. Um, largely because councillor Clark brought up regulating vehicles similar to how we just advanced a home energy score. Uh, and I know councillor Taylor and her role as an El Rapa liaison, which I happen to be, uh, has brought that forward multiple times. With little to no luck, and I would love to see a statewide fix or and or regional fix that would. Better regulate vehicular emissions. Speaking of councillor Taylor's goals that I just happen to be advancing and carrying forward. That meet our C R O goals stated of being carbon neutral. Uh, I just, with no surprises, wanted colleagues to recognize that our neighborhood association. Uh, and advocates throughout the community are continuing to beat the drum to reduce the city's use of. Gas powered leaf blowers, gas powered lawn equipment. And I would hope that we could. We could work with our state or our county partners or our Rapa partners to realize some sort of. Electrification incentive. Phasing out gas powered equipment, many of which just run for one hour. Admit the same amount of emissions. That driving an average automobile 1,000 miles emits. It's a pretty alarming statistic. So do you have any comments, Chelsea, about strategies or goals that the city can take up in the in the interim as we advance toward electrification?
I'm specific to the the leaf blowers. Uh, I know we're just, we're having a conversation internally to understand the situation there and we can come back with more information. And then I think that your other comment was. Related to statewide. Can you clarify the?
Well, I started with the 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 vehicle emissions regulation.
Yeah.
But and then and and rounding out with the the garden equipment and in particular two stroke engine, gas powered leaf blowers.
Yeah, I think in terms of vehicle emissions, again, I. Yeah, I think in terms of uh, vehicle emissions, again, I'd I'd say we're going to have a process locally uh, with the transportation system plan update next year. And I think um statewide, I'm not, we can come back with more information about what's happening. I don't have anything to offer specifically there today.
Thanks. If there's time, Mayor, I may need a second round to talk about bikes.
Okay, sounds good. Alan and then Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Chelsea, uh, for doing all this work. This this matrix is awesome. Uh, it it has a lot of really great actions in it. There's 115 of them. Um, and it and it shows them in a very clear way of where they are, what we're doing. So it represents a lot of work. Um, and it and it should be helped to be clear that the cap 2.0 actions in this list were actions that had commitments by folks to do them and the funding to do them. Not all of them are completely funded, partially funded, some of them aren't funded, but commitments to get them done. So all the other things that we have to do uh, are aren't yet on this list. And so we still need to work through that part of this. Um, and those things will need funding and I kind of link this matrix and those ideas to our December 13th work session, which is real, which is going to focus in on uh, dedicated funding sources for both climate change and homelessness. Grabbing them together builds a coalition. Yes, is my idea, but the that will create this dedicated funding source to be able to work on the the these issues that are partially funded or enough funded, plus also the new set over over the years, especially in the transportation sector, which is where most of our emissions come from. So that other 97% other than uh, natural gas new hookups are the stuff that we really need to start working on. And and that work session along with this matrix helps us get our our hands around that uh, and and minds around that in order to make it work. Um, I think uh, as I said, when we had the Sustainability Commission work session on their work plan that I would like to see us work on on local offsets. I I understand the frustration with not having a local offset. But having been the former chair of the Climate Trust, um, I know how complex it is in creating these offset projects and how much work it takes to get there. It's a lot of time and a lot of effort, which means there's a lot of expense to be able to get there. And size matters too. Small projects, it takes just as much almost effort to do a small project as a big project. So uh, so all that embedded cost just to get to the point of creating one of these things and then and then making them work and then implementing them uh, has a lot, it takes a lot of time and effort. Um, so uh, so local ones are kind of tough. We don't have a built list, built-in list of projects to go after, but I'm hoping what the what the work plan at work that the Sustainability Commission can do is to start that process to to encourage and drum up local project list and to figure out how we can eventually get local projects that either the Climate Trust or other people cannot certify so that we can get our own local assets, which is our own local economic development, our own um, our own local uh, emission reductions in the city and in this area. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Mike.
I agree with that last part that Alan said, and uh, I would add as an example, like how to uh, uh, create entrepreneurial opportunity out of more effective and more efficient plastics recycling opportunities, right? Um, we have a university, a world-class one, I hear, right here in our town. And now if only they just had a new science of it. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I I I remember seeing some buildings go up. I I think there's real opportunity here for us as a community to lead in this regard. I don't know what it would require us to do, manager. But I I sure think that organizing around that issue could be a gigantic help to other communities and could be a real economic boost for us. So I I don't know what that looks like, but when we start talking about incentivizing those sort of things or how we create the structures around it, I'm I'm absolutely in favor. Um, Chelsea, you mentioned as a part of reaching all of our 2.0 goals. You mentioned the work of Northwest Natural, I think, during part of that, our cooperative efforts with them as a part of reaching that goal. Could you give me more specifics about that here for everybody else to hear that maybe hasn't read? That's watching us. Tell me more about the specific actions and the specific assumptions that help us reach that goal of their behaviors.
So the part that I referenced today was the SB 844 voluntary emissions reduction program. Um, that was included in part of the energy efficiency proposal. Is that what you want me to speak to? Or is there something else that I mentioned?
Well, I want two parts. One, that's you said the 844 stuff. Is that what? So that's assuming we get a franchise agreement and assuming it moves. No, we don't need to have, I'm seeing the manager shaking.
Yeah, sorry. I usually have game face, no body, no body language, but I was like, mm-mm.
Conversations are better anyway. So we are we assuming those uh, agreements? And if so, what do they require?
So the when I came back to you and we had a new approach, it was sort of the together approach that I've talked about it as a paperclip. The approach I outlined to you was we would work with Northwest Natural on a voluntary emissions program, which is what we keep calling the 844 Senate 844 project, just because it's easy to say. That's um, we're working on that. We're very close to having the final project list that you've given me the authority to approve based on your criteria around low income. I presented that to you last week so that you had an outline of where we were heading. That will get submitted and processed ahead of any um, ahead of the franchise discussion. Then we'll come back with a discussion about the franchise in a public hearing. They're they're really, they're sort of going together, but they're separate.
Sure, they're only paperclipped together. I get it. That's awesome. Um, so how much of that work with 844 and other cooperative agreements that we have with Northwest Natural or working together as a large lever stakeholder are dependent on our relationship with them for us to meet the cap 2.0 goals? I mean, if they just said, hey, gosh, guys, I don't like you very much. We're not gonna, we're not gonna play anymore. What would happen? Would we still meet the cap 2.0 goals?
It's kind of tricky to speculate on what Northwest Natural will do or they won't do. Um.
That's why I'm eliminating the speculation. And if they said, sorry, guys, we're not going to participate. Would they, would we meet our goals?
It depends on what they choose to do uh, outside of what they do necessarily in partnership with the city. So for example, I know they're working on getting more renewable natural gas in their system regardless of our relationship with them. Um, more and more of their customers want a decarbonized product and to reduce emissions in their communities. So it's it's really hard to say what would happen.
I think, you know, I think the what you're pointing to though is, you know, will it be more challenging if we're not in partnership and not working together? I think so, you know, because you'll, if we're not going in that direction, the alternative is um, meeting our climate goals in other ways, so.
An adversarial relationship is what I'm saying would not help us reach our climate 2.0 goals. As a matter of fact, it would make it harder. That's the point I'm trying to make. And I I just want us to bear that in mind as we move forward with the conversations because some of the things um, some of the pieces of the conversation and some of the emails we get um, create a a more extreme sort of relationship with that organization. And I think we're all, we're all better off with a more cooperative one to reach mutual goals. Um, I think, as Frank said at EWEB, when he was here with us, that that opportunity for us to move forward with with shared goals towards uh, I'm running out of time, towards towards carbon emission reductions will get us there faster and less expensive. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Jennifer and then Randy.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to circle back to Chelsea, your recommendations about energy efficiency. I really appreciated those different options. You mentioned that it was a recommendation to move it on to the December um, work session, which makes a lot of sense. And I just wanted to make sure, is that something that will happen automatically? Or do we need to like, do something official to make that happen today?
That will happen automatically. There's, it's, we have a list going of different interests um, that you all flagged over the past year or so. Um, a number of it came from the Sustainability Commission, for example, around possible risk bond, air quality. Um, and we didn't take a vote on any of those. Um, so we'll just keep those as a list. And when it's time to vote or make a decision, they'll all be there for you to reference.
Excellent. I just wanted to make sure they didn't get lost in the conversation. Thank you so much. That's all I have for now.
Okay, Randy, and then we'll have some second rounds.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I just want to put my lend my voice of support for the work that Chelsea, you and the Sustainability Commission have done. I think it's it's good. I think it's a good track. Most of my questions and comments are really going to be centered around the the two motions that are coming up and I I I'm really worried that 20 minutes is not going to be enough time for all of us. So I'm going to um stop talking right now and hopefully be able to get some time then. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Emily.
I don't have a lot to add, but I want to make sure that Chelsea and the rest of the world know that this is an incredible response to our request for a table. And there's so much information in here. And although the print is teeny tiny, you can read it and and it's it's all there and the same line. So I find this to be incredibly helpful, both for today, but for a long time going forward. And so um my heartfelt thanks to you. And I also appreciate when we talked yesterday and and different things came up. And, you know, the realization that this is a huge topic and we weren't going to cover it all today. But um, you always had answers of where it was going to come up in the pretty near future. So that was a big relief for me. And uh, I think this is great work. I'm looking forward to going forward with it. And I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Our two councils with hands up for a second round. And Matt, it seemed to me that you asked for a second round, but you're waiting for the next discussion. Okay. All right. So uh, Claire and then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to offer a little perspective on the Northwest Natural and and I apologize. Mike, I'm not trying to get into a back and forth with you today. That's not any, that is not a plan. It's just rooted out that way. Um. You know, my view is on the 844 program right now. I mean, it's pure speculation on what the carbon emission reductions would be from a a program under that um trying to fulfill through that uh, venue and even whether or not it's going to be approved by the state regulators. So I think there's so much uncertainty around that that I don't know that I I'd want to uh, give up taking other uh, concrete actions we might have a majority to take, um, waiting for that to play out. And then what I did see in the AIS, and I understand Counselor Clark was asking this to be articulated for for folks who might be watching, but on page 30 of the packet, there was some articulation about uh, Northwest Naturals work with uh, low-income customer programs, which includes um some um support with affordable housing, weatherization and other things along those lines, which I presume they would continue to do uh, regardless of any um, actions that this council might take um on the issue of reducing emissions. So I I appreciate the concern Counselor Clark raised, but I I just wanted to note there are some things that they're going to do no matter what. Um, it it not dependent on a positive or negative relationship with with the city of Eugene.
Thank you, Alan and Mike. And I'm hoping you can hold this short so that we can actually move on to the next piece.
Oh, I was trying to get in the queue for the the motions, Mayor. But just as a um, one extra point, so if you put me in that queue, um, I we can work with the Energy Trust of Oregon to fund uh, low to moderate income weatherization, which is an important part because there's 50 to 60% of people in Northwest Naturals customers are low to moderate income. We can do that with or without Northwest Natural. So there's lots of venues to work.
Thank you. Mike, one one last quick comment here.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the round two as well as the others. Um, I I would suggest that uh what they may or may not do, my Claire, without wanting to engage you too deeply in debate uh, would be just as speculative, if not more so. You're speculating that they would continue to do something, but it frankly, a lot of this has to do with our relationship with them and how they suspect and and view us as a regulatory body. If they see us as a, as an, you know, as not a partner, but uh, an adversary. I I'd say it's very speculative to to imagine what, how they may behave in the future in order to serve their customers and what they think is best. Um, uh, my larger point was, you know, that it's it isn't speculative to say that as currently planned, we won't meet our goals if our relationship doesn't continue with the 844 agreements and some of the other things we've done. Then that was my larger point is that we're going to have to, we're going to have to do something else or we won't meet our goals if we do something to upset that relationship. So. Oops, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, thanks for, oh, uh, Greg.
Uh, I I have to take exception with my friend Mike's uh, assessment about that relationship. You know, um Northwest Natural is a private organization and they have goals and they have stockholders and people that they, whose needs they need to meet financially. Um, we do too, as a public entity that's negotiating with them or right now maybe not negotiating so much. Um, but I am a firm believer that if we don't take a firm position um, we'll end up agreeing to something that will not be in the best interest of the uh, uh, of our total community. So um, I kind of go back to you know, some lessons I learned in the Midwest, you know, hold your position. You know, enhance your position and then your opponent, in this case, we're adversarial in some areas here. Um, will be more likely to come to the table with a more reasonable and agreeable proposal that we could all get our heads around. So that's that that that's my only comment as far as that's concerned.
Okay, thank you all for that uh, discussion. And again, thank you, Chelsea, for the presentations. Really, really terrific. And um, so we do have a couple of motions and I am going to turn to Councilor Brett. Claire, go ahead and put the first one on the table.
Thanks, Mayor. And uh, assuming at a second, I'd like to speak to it briefly. So I moved to direct the city manager to schedule a work session to discuss changes to city code that would require all newly constructed commercial and residential buildings to be electric only beginning January 1st, 2023.
Second.
Hey, please go ahead and speak to it.
Thanks. So this is um, a kind of revised motion uh, based on uh, motions that Counselor Evans and same with my uh, second motion that I hope to make later in this meeting, um that Counselor Evans had put forward uh, via email, but never got a chance to to put on the table um, a couple of months ago. Um, I extended the timeline uh, somewhat uh, from I think it was July of 2022. So this timeline is to January of 2023. Uh, Counselor Evans' motion was to bring back an ordinance and I felt like that was a little premature. I felt like we needed to have a a pretty robust conversation about what this looks like and the implications and did we want to make any exceptions or expand it? Um, before we asked the city manager to bring back emotions, uh, excuse me, an ordinance. So I revised it to schedule a work session so that we could have that conversation. Um we've received lots of public input, lots of uh, testimony. Uh, many of us have had meetings uh, out in the community around this. But as a council at this table, we have not really had an opportunity to dig into this question and uh, how it would look, how, what what are our authorities, what are our limitations, all all that stuff. So I I really So I I really felt like a work session was the best way forward in the process at this point. And I'll leave it there and look forward to the discussion.
Thank you. Alan and then Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. When I wrote the Climate Recovery Ordinance back in 2014, the CRO, putting our greenhouse gas emission reduction goals into ordinance or law, first in the in the country to do that and then prior plan to get there, it included the goal of reducing fossil fuel use by 50% by 2035. Embedded in that goal or that ordinance was to transition away from natural gas. So I and the council, by doing that, have understood the need to shift away from natural gas for years. And so the issue has not been weather, but we transition away, but how to do it. And my experience has been that collaboration usually gets us further faster than a more adversarial litigious posture. So I've been pushing really hard for negotiations with Northwest Natural to come up with a solution. But saying that, we also needed to go into those negotiations with our eyes wide open. And if it doesn't work out, we need to shift to Plan B. Well, I I went back and looked at my files and one of our first work sessions on Northwest Natural franchise agreements was on November 14th, 2018. That was over three years ago, almost the anniversary. And so and then we started negotiations with Northwest Natural about two years ago, really. And so we entered into earnest negotiations in faith with them. And I thought we'd be hammering out a solution that worked for both of us. We even hired an expert to help us get there. And I thought we'd be able to hammer out an agreement and save eight to 10 months. Our first idea of how to accomplish that high centered and we we agreed to disagree. So we got nowhere with that after over a year. And 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 so I really have run out of, and here we are two years later and we still don't have an agreement on anything. So I've kind of run out of patience with with that process and I don't have confidence that we're going to get anywhere soon. And as Claire mentioned, the 844 process is, they're going to take quite a long time to get there. So I think it's time to pull out Plan B. So I can now support the beginning, our journey with respect to natural gas on two fronts. No new hookups for commercial reduction residential with limited exceptions and working to reduce natural gas use in the existing load, that's 80% of our gas emissions moving forward and transitioning away from fossil fuel and towards electrification. And I think it's important to understand that that no new gas hookups represent only about 3% of our overall reduction goal. And interestingly, the council has spent almost all of our attention on on this. So it's time to move along and focus our attention on the other 97% of the actions that that we need to do in order to meet the goal. And I'll need another round, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Mike and then Randy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say to my friend Greg with regard to the adversarial comment he made. And I understand entirely your your feelings here and Alan's as well and his similar comments. But my concerns and and the conflict that I feel isn't at all with Northwest Naturals as an organization. I I get their professional business, their, you know, I I I don't have any interest in their well being. I have an interest in their customers' well being, who are also our constituents. My concern is that we work well together as partners in this for the sake only of our constituents. Because to the degree that costs change, to the degree that requirements change, lives change, it's the people in our community that have to pay that price if there are consequences. And I want us to make sure that we're moving forward in a way that best serves them and their interests and best serves the opportunity for for them not to feel adverse consequences as a result of our decisions. That's why I I want to say thank you to to Claire. Because I had concerns with the way the motion was worded in the email that we received and in previous conversations. But I'm I'm all for us having work sessions on anything, really. And, you know, I I think it's a good thing when we can explore the details of something. And so for us to talk about it some more and get more information, you bet, I'll be happy to vote in favor of this to support that. Manager, there are going to be a couple of things I'm going to be really interested to know in that work session and in that conversation. Number one, when Frank from E-Webb appeared with a joint meeting with us, he mentioned on, he he shows the charts of how, you know, I I may get the numbers wrong here, but I think the proportions are right. You know, the $30 a megawatt hour for regular power cost versus the $400 a gigawatt hour mega, I don't know, you get the point. When when we have peak load and those occur a couple of times a day. So one of the things he mentioned was, to the degree that we are spiking peak load more frequently, the cost for electricity shifts dramatically. So I'm going to want to know what's the impact on cost of electricity based on current system that E-Webb has in place, the farther along we go and and to a scale. You know, now, a year from now, as, you know, when X number of of percentage of the community is, has got, has a demand for electricity. And the second one, I'm running out of time, I'll try to get in quick, will be the idea that somehow stopping burning gas will reduce carbon emissions. They've made it plain to us that is they have to burn gas and burn coal to get peak load.
Mike, I can give you a second. I can give you a second round for that. That sounds like a long one. So let me give you a second. Okay, thanks. All right, Randy and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. And I I feel much better about this proposed motion, bringing this back as a work session than just jumping right to to preparing an ordinance. I I think we need to have discussion with this as a council. I'm not going to debate the efficacy of moving away from the use of fossil fuel in all things we do. But at the same time, it needs to be a planned, reasonable approach as we move forward. I am concerned about doing it at the community level where you can step across a human made line and instantly not have the same regulations applied to you as you do within our 43 square miles that is the city of Eugene. That impacts our local economy, which is jobs. These are important to the people who live here. I I also playing along with what Counselor Clark was saying, I want to know also city manager and Chelsea, what the effects are going to be of dam scheduled spills to to and ha- help the the salmon, Chinook salmon habitat, which I I also agree with. But that's going to affect our hydroelectric generation capacity. Likewise, dams that are looked at to be breached is going to also impact our capacity at a time we're trying to put more load on the system. And then from a resilience standpoint, I I've worked in the what if business for a lot of years. And I worry about any single points of failure. I think in a in a community, it's good to have different sources of of energy and power that we can we can rely on. And then I also want to get into where the public is on this. We've certainly heard a lot in our public forums. I've heard a lot when I've been out in the community on the other side of the issue as well. I don't have a good feel for where the community is. But we received as council this last week, an email from a constituent that was referring to a community survey that was conducted to the city manager. Is that something we can get our hands on? I mean, I would like to know who who did the the survey? Was it a consulting firm? Was it consultant that that did it? Is it scientifically valid? What is the the sample size? And what were the findings? And I think that this is important information to know. And maybe it's something we should be considering as well. Because I I do know there are different sides to this issue out there. And I think this is very important that we we drill into this. Also, I I want to point out to the public that right now, without any mandates, we are all free to make the choice to electrify. And that that option stands before us. The the only barrier really is cost. But you have that whether it's mandatory or voluntary. And I'm out of time, so maybe a second round, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer and then Matt.
Thanks, Mayor. I I want to first appreciate the two motion setup that Counselor Evans started and and Counselor Sarret brought today. I think it's a really smart way of tackling this. Building electrification will get us cleaner air, healthier homes, and will support good jobs in our community. And requiring electrification combined with funding to help low to moderate income residents and our business community to fuel switch will create an equitable and feasible plan for decarbonizing our buildings. And when we combine that with with these ongoing energy efficiency improvements, it's easy to see how all these things line up to support our trip of waddling line of environment, equity, and economy. So I'm, I know it's taken a long time to get to this point, but I'm really excited and I will be supporting both of Claire's some motions today. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt and then Greg.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a a a quick comment in regards to something that I heard my my friend Counselor Groves mention. We can't all voluntarily electrify on our own. Some of us rent homes in which there are gas hookups and you have no choice but to endure a gas hookup that could be harmful to one's health. I have a question that may be answered today. I would hope we don't have to wait till the work session. Can we guarantee an overall emissions reduction if the only action we're taking is the SB 844 project?
We we can't guarantee that with the SB 844 that our overall natural gas emissions will go down. It depends on consumption in our community. So they interact, if that makes sense. It'll help decrease somewhat, but we don't know what the increase will be if if gas consumption continues to go up.
Well, the pro, I just want to do one small clarification because the project will require Northwest Natural to say what the emissions reductions will be and then report on what the emissions reductions will be. So you can guarantee from that project that will happen. I think what you're pointing out, Chelsea, is that it doesn't mean that we'll get overall emissions reductions depending on what else happens across the system, but that project would guarantee more than we're getting now.
Okay, thank you. While I concur that under normal circumstances, collaboration does get you there quicker, I want to recognize that swift regulatory action also gets you to where you need to be. I want to make it very clear, as I have in the past, that I am strongly supportive of advancing robust electrification and decarbonization strategies within the municipality with a moratorium on any new fossil fuel hookups. I'm going to wear my Ensign metaphor hat. If our goal was to reduce the amount of hamburgers eaten in the community and we were in a franchise agreement with McDonald's and they were like, we've got salads on the menu, we're going to move toward all vegan options. And yet there's McDonald's popping up everywhere. And at the same time, we're negotiating to reduce the amount of hamburgers eaten in the community. McDonald's is sending out $500 coupons to customers to continue to eat hamburgers. It would be a head scratcher as to why we continue after a three or four year period, two years of negotiations, why we continue to work with the business that's in the business of selling hamburgers to reduce the amount of hamburgers eaten in the community. I know it's lunchtime, probably a little hungry, but I will be strongly supporting this motion. Thank you, Counselor Sarret, for advancing it. And I look forward to the work session. And thank you, colleagues, for supporting it.
Thank you. Craig.
Thanks, Mayor. Initially, I'm going to, I I'm going to support the modifications that Claire made to my original motions. Sometimes, and I I learned this a long time ago, you know, in 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 dealing with my parents. My mother would say something that was not totally outlandish, but was in the realm of reality to straighten me out. So, you know, sometimes you have to, you know, say, look, I I'm going to do X if you don't do Y. And, you know, it gives us an opportunity to work back to a position that is reasonable and negotiable. Well, what we don't have now, as Alan pointed out, we we've been trying to do this since 2018. And we haven't had as much movement as we need to have from our partners on this. So, you know, I think that we need to get serious, make sure that, you know, they understand that we are, you know, in a position to develop the regulatory framework on our own without that conversation. But I'm still, I'm still supportive of a a a full blown work session on this. I think that we can make some headway. But I don't think, I I don't think it's appropriate to repeat my mother on this. But, you know, she would say, look, if you don't do what I'm telling you to do, you know, I literally will beat the black off of you. So, so, you know, and I I I understood that clearly. So we, I I think that we really need to, you know, be tough, get tough. I agree with Counselor Keating. I agree with Counselor Zalink on this. And, you know, if 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 we don't start, you know, doing what we need to do, we will run out of time. And then we'll, there'll be no way to turn back. You know, and we already have partners around the globe who are not playing nicely with us. And particularly mentioned China and the Soviet Union. So let let Eugene lead the way.
Thank you. Emily.
Thank you. And thank you, Claire, for and Greg for these motions. I'm really ready and really excited to have a work session on this. It's, you know, been something people have been talking about for a long, long time. And we need to explore it. I I don't think we should just say, yeah, right now, but I really want that work session. So thank you. I'd like to offer a friendly that we include industry along with residential and commercial. That be possible?
Um, I I would be okay with including that as as part of the work session. I I don't know if it will make it into the final ordinance, but sure, I'm happy to modify the motion so that it's included in the conversation at the work session.
That would be great if we could just talk about it. So we'll be talking about all this stuff and I just would like it to be included. So thank you.
And Counselor Yay, you're okay with that?
It's fine. Yeah.
So yes, we can add industrial. So we newly constructed, commercial, residential, and industrial buildings.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So I have five councillors lined up for a second round and we have a second ordinance that we really do need to consider today. So I, and it looks like the manager has something to add also. So just, I'm asking you to be succinct so that we can get through all of this. It is important and a reminder that we are just asking for a work session. So we don't have to dial in everything in this conversation. Greg, it looks like you're raising your hand.
Yeah, Mayor, I I would like to suggest we add 10 minutes to this work session to, you know, discuss the second motion as well.
How about, we're going to need 15.
Okay, 15 sounds.
I second 15.
Thank, thank you. Everybody just raise your hand if you agree with that. Thank you all. Perfect. Okay, we definitely need the time. Thank you for that, Greg. So second rounds, Alan and then Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, enter, to tell Chelsea and 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 the senior managers' point, energy efficiency works. It really does reduce consumption in the place where it's done. So just be clear about that, how it just be clear about that. How it interacts with the entire system is a different story. And also when we discuss costs, we need to make sure we're including all the costs. No action also has a cost. And as we're seeing, it can be a tremendous cost. And I believe mitigation in the end is going to be magnitudes cheaper than adaptation if we don't do anything. And as we're seeing, and costs are not only the upfront cost of action, but also the avoided costs of not doing anything. So costs of not doing anything, I could think is going to be way higher than moving forward with other things. I think this motion moves this along to a work session and a potential ordinance that may or may not result in legal action by Northwest Natural and possibly by the PUC over the authority to actually do this. And despite the rhetoric, it's far from clear that we actually have authority to do this, but we'll find out. And we need, we also need to be careful of the words we use. The city of Eugene does not regulate natural gas utilities. That's the purview of the Oregon PUC. We can condition right-of-way use and we can use other mechanisms, but we don't regulate natural gas utilities. So I think it'd be helpful to clean up our language. In the end, this will probably not, if we end up doing this, it's probably not going to result in the actual greenhouse gas emission reduction for years because it will play out the way it's going to play out. But we need to let it play out and run its course. Having said that, all of that, I don't see the negotiations around the A forty-four process, which is really an effort to reduce existing natural gas, greenhouse gas emissions as mutually exclusive from new infrastructure. I think they work in parallel. The new load and existing load are different animals. And I hope that Northwest Natural will continue with us in negotiating good faith with that groundbreaking agreement on weatherization, weatherizing low to moderate income homes, especially since fifty to sixty percent of their, their customers are low to moderate income. That's really important work to continue to do over the long haul, especially in that transition. So at this time, I can support this motion and start this journey on our transition away from fossil fuels as we originally envisioned in the twenty fourteen CRO ordinance. And, and I think this work session begins that and allows us to dig in. So I'm supportive.
Thank you. Mike and then Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. Alan touched on a very important point that, you know, no one, Alan, is suggesting that we make no changes. No one is suggesting that there be no changes. The question is, how do we change? How is it most intelligent? How is, what's the wisest way forward that brings us the most in with regard to carbon reductions? And you said it yourself, it's a dynamic system. The system overall is dynamic, not a static system. So, and I hate quoting the previous counselor prior, but I will. This is a game of whack-a-mole. The things we do here affect the system overall and it has consequences on us. And that's what I'm trying to get to with costs. So, manager, to resume, if, for example, hypothetically, the motion at some point said, we will do what creates the, the greatest carbon emissions reduction overall used by people in our community and the greatest savings to the people of our community, I'd vote for that in a minute. But the argument here isn't about what, it's about how. Because I believe that based on what we've been told by the experts, like the general manager of E-Web, we end up putting out more carbon the higher percentage of power we buy at peak load. So when we're, it's, and it's, you know, twelve times as expensive and they have to burn natural gas, coal in Oregon, in order to produce that electricity, and it's done so at a sixty-eight percent efficiency level to just using it in the first place. So, manager, this is the very specific question. I would love to have an expert answer this question, please. If we were to, you know, I won't go to the extreme. As we increase electrification, in what way, where's the, where does the line exist where we begin to burn and, and emit more carbon in electrification? Then we would if we burned it locally in, in direct systems that exist. Because it would be really ridiculous of us to massively increase the cost of our electricity. At the same time, we end up putting more carbon into the atmosphere because we, the system can't handle the load and it has to be produced by burning a ton more natural gas. I also want to say that I agree with absolutely everything that Randy said with regard to potential consequences and costs. We've had builders look us in the eye and say they won't build any more houses that don't have gas in them. So, cool, we can make that decision. But it means housing prices are going to continue to go up in Eugene at a higher rate than they are in Springfield or any of the surrounding communities. I want to see all the costs if we can, manager. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just jump in really quick on that?
Please do.
Perfect segue to what I was going to say, just specific to the work session. So the, I want to come into this next work session with the right expectations, right sized. And so what, the way it's stated right now is, is very clearly saying, hey, city manager, we want to have a work session to talk about changes to the city code that would be required to do this. Not impacts of that, costs of that, just the changes to the code. So there's been a couple of other questions here around the one that you just had Counselor Clark, the one that you had Counselor Groves around the survey. Some of those are outside of that motion. So I can provide that information and we'll go seeking it, but probably not as part of that work session unless there's something about that work session that says, and we want to know the costs and impacts.
Would a friendly assist that? Manager?
I, I think that's, I just, I would be bringing back what's true to this motion, which is what codes need to change to make this happen. So, yeah, I wouldn't, I would feel pretty uncomfortable jumping in because it'll feel like I'm advocating in one way or the other without all of you agreeing you want to know the costs and the impacts.
I understand.
The majority.
I would also just.
Do I still have time, Mayor? I, I thought I was out, but if I still have time, I make that second. I mean, I make that friendly.
I think you're out. So, but I can, I can circle back to you. Let me, both Randy and Claire speak to that, that, that may be relevant, and then we'll come back. So Randy, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I'd be happy to make the friendly for you, Mike. I mean, I'd like that information as well. I'd also like to know how we're going to try and manage volatility in the electrical costs. I mean, it's, electricity is one of the most volatile commodities there is. And it has really wide fluctuations, especially as capacity is reduced, i.e. the dams and the spillovers, and demand is increased moving to electrification. I, it's fine to be moving in this direction, but we need to know what we're get, we're up against and what our community is going to face. I think it would be irresponsible not to have that level of discussion. And then the other thing I wanted to, to address, I, I keep hearing my colleagues saying that, you know, this has been, how long this has been going on and everything. And I understand that the negotiations have been going on a long time. But if you'll recall, I think it was just this summer in June when we gave the manager specific direction to reengage with Northwest Natural and start working on the eight forty-four and the franchise agreement. So, you know, that, to me, that's, the clock kind of started over at that point for me. And so I wanted to point that out as, as well. Thank you.
Was your friendly accepted?
I didn't hear.
You may need to make it as a motion and not a friendly.
I, I didn't hear a request for a friendly and, and I'm not willing to grant it.
There you go.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion, and I can't remember everything that was, was said in there, but we make a motion to amend where we talk about the, the costs associated with this. So at least we're walking into it with our eyes wide open. I, I mean, you know, right now, this is going to be impacting people, especially at the low end of, of the economic scale. And we need to have that as part of our decision point, I think.
So can I just interject? Can I just, I'd like to just interject here for just a moment so that we move forward. So there are multiple facets to making this change. And the first piece is the city code. That is not necessarily the end of that game, and it is a question about how promptly we can come back with all of those pieces. The second comment I would make is that we had a joint meeting with E-Web and we could have another joint meeting with E-Web because we are not the electricity providers and managers. Our job is not to regulate what happens in the peak control. And I don't, so it's important for us to understand that and understand the landscape in which E-Web is functioning. But I'm not sure that needs to be embedded in a motion here for the work we're doing. So I think cost is going to be important. I'm suggesting that you could have a separate motion on that. You could have a follow-up work session. It could emerge from the work session you're, that's currently on the table. So just my thoughts and I'll turn this over to Claire because it's her motion.
I still have time, Mayor.
Okay, all right, all right, fine. We'll give you.
There's a motion on the table.
I thought you were finished. I apologize. Go ahead, Randy.
No, thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just trying to, to get information in a work session, which a work session is for. I mean, I'm not trying to make this a contentious thing. I just think we should be walking into this with our eyes wide open. That's all I'm asking. And so with that said, yes, I make a motion that we include information on cost, cost volatility, and how we're going to manage that. Also, the effects of capacity reduction and renewable electric generation through hydroelectric power. And those are points that we learn about in the work session. I think that just helps us make a reasonable decision.
I have a clarifying question, Mayor.
Well, I'd like to speak to the motion, the substitute motion or the motion to amend.
So what I'm here, that's why I'm.
Okay, I'm going to let Claire speak to it, then Alan, then Mike, and then Greg as well. Okay?
So, I was, I've been a little silent through most of this. I guess I should have clarified that I, I really see this work session as probably the first of, of maybe two, maybe three work sessions, right? Like this is a big deal of what we're trying to discuss. And I really made an effort to keep the motion as spare as possible so that we could initiate that conversation, sit down at the table together. These things that folks are raising right now could be brought up, could be highlighted. We could figure out what's within our authority to dig into and what do we need to get E-Web's advice on. You know, I, I don't see a value, I could start a rant about Northwest Natural here that would take up my rest of my two minutes, but I won't. And I think my second motion, if we ever get to it, is, is more around the potential impacts to low-income people than this first motion, which is about new construction. So, you know, I, I, that's why I'm not accepting the friendly to add more detail about specific things that we need to discuss at this first work session. I, I think we may come out of that work session ready to put an ordinance out there, but I think actually we're more likely to say we still have this set of questions and concerns. We need to have another work session.
Thank you. Okay, I've got Alan and then Greg and then Mike.
Yeah, my clarifying question was cost, what kind of cost and to whom? Which is a big, big question and we'll take a good deal of analysis. I think that's an important thing that we need to discuss as we move forward. But there's other things embedded in, in this conversation, which I think will come up in the work session as well, like what's the impact on low to moderate income? And what is the, as people leave the system that have the wherewithal to do that, what happens to the rest of the folks which don't have the wherewithal to do that? What's the impact to E-Web? What's the impact to Northwest Natural Gas? What's the legal authority to actually do this? The whole issue of replacement power, in fact, I just had a meeting on that this morning. It is a perennial question. It's not a simple question. It's an entire work session all to itself about what's happening in the, in the, in the region and in the West with regard to replacement power and electrification with renewables. So there's a lot of embedded questions in this work session that I think will come up. I, I would actually think that, I like Claire's strategy that the, the motion doesn't enumerate everything that we're going to talk about in the work session. We need to talk about all those things in the work session. But if we start adding every one of these things, you know, if I start adding, what's out, what's also have impact on low, moderate income, impact to E-Web, impact to Northwest Natural, legal authority questions, I think that the motion gets kind of encumbered with all of that stuff. So I think it's that, if we can all agree, it's understood that the multiple work sessions we're going to have on this need to talk about all those things. I think we can move forward a little bit more expeditiously. And, and with that understanding, and if everybody can agree to that, that we will do that, then, then maybe the motion can be withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Greg and then Mike.
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Groves' concerns, but I think that this situation is a lot more complicated. And we do need to have maybe two and possibly three work sessions that are specifically drilled in on topics that are all related to, to this. And as we stated, we're talking about new construction. We're not talking about things that are existing or projects that are in the pipeline, particularly from the perspective of us acting as a urban renewal agency. We've made certain commitments that I don't think that we can or should go back on. But we do need to have these conversations. And we need to have them in a, in a way that we don't overtax our city staff. So, you know, I don't want to throw a bunch of stuff on Chelsea's plate or Sarah's plate that's not manageable and doesn't give us the clarity that we need. So I'm going to be opposing this particular motion and wanting to go back to our original motion.
Okay, Mike and then Emily.
It seems like we're presenting this with a consensus idea, just in the words of Alan and Greg. And I think, as I see Randy nod his head, he's probably in a similar place that I am, which is, Claire, if you want to refine your initial motion to the specifics more like Alan mentioned, that, or for example, just to say that we need to come back in three or four work sessions prior to action, then I'd certainly be willing to withdraw my second. I, I, I think that I, I agree with what they're saying that this is an important step, this idea of how we decarbonize. But, but the how and the impacts of it are, are the important part to understand. And, and it's not something I'm comfortable at all taking quick action. So I, I'd love to hear what you think on that and maybe Randy and I pull the motion back. I don't know.
Claire, why don't you go ahead if you have a response?
Sure, Mayor. I, I mean, I think the motion speaks for itself. I don't want to presuppose how many work sessions we need to have to do this. We are a deliberative body. If this motion passes with the addition of the industrial buildings, we'll have a work session. At that time, we can determine if we need another one. And then when we have the other one, we can determine if we need another one after that. And, and that's how I think proper process should go.
I understand proper process and agree on, and that it's important. I also understand collaboration and I'm, I'm trying to give here. And I, I don't think this needs to be a thing we do with, with this kind of, I mean, I don't want to describe it. I was hopeful that, let's put it in a positive sense. I was hoping that this is not an acrimonious conversation, but one as we go on that has us all working together towards a better end for the entire community. So it, it's clear to me, though, that there's, there are people in our community who would like this to move very quickly and would like us to make this decision quickly without taking what I would consider to be adequate time for considering the consequences. So I guess we'll see how the vote comes out and we'll see how it goes.
Okay, Emily. Okay, Emily.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that this information about the how much carbon and the cost is really important. And if some of it came up in our first work session, that would be fantastic, but I don't. Want to put too much into the first work session and make us not be able to discuss it. In a logical, rational, cooperative way. I I know that people want to go too fast and I know what happens when I go too fast. I'm more liable to have regrets. So I appreciate the ask for this information. And I I do want to hear it, but I think if we're going to get the next work session. Sooner, we need to ask for a reasonable amount of work to get to that one. And we've given the heads up of what other information we want. Turns out, oh, it's easy. I opened this file and it's all there. Bring it. But I think we need to do this in steps. We've had a lot of asking for this work session. And I'd really like to see us go forward in steps. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Randy.
Thank you, Mayor, and I I think Mike described where I'm coming from on this. I mean, I'm just trying to find a way to get the information and if if we're willing to take. A thoughtful approach to this. I just didn't want one work session and done without having. This this degree of information. I think we owe it to the public. I guarantee you will wish we had if people start getting $800 bills. And saying, what the heck, City Council? So I I I really want to take the time to dissect this. Well, it doesn't mean this has to go on for months and months and months, but I just don't see any way of doing it in one work session. At the same time, I don't have a good enough feel to say we need two or we need three. I I think we just. Take as much time as we need and as long as we're keeping things moving forward and we're we're getting our questions answered. So I mean, I would be happy to provide a list to somebody of things I'm interested in, or I can. Say those at the next work session, but with that said. I'm willing to withdraw my motion if we kind of have a gentle person's agreement here that that we're going to drill in. And get this information. You know, if I can just see head nods, I'll feel comfortable with that.
I'll withdraw my second if the manager seems to. Say that she's changed her position from what she mentioned initially as her understanding of our.
This one. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. I I have something to offer that might assuage Counselor Clark.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So if you did withdraw your motion, I would I would be willing to change the wording to read direct the city manager to schedule. Work sessions, plural. To discuss city code. And then the addition of the industrial.
I withdraw my second.
That would I withdraw my my motion. That's that's perfectly acceptable to me. That's what I was looking. That's what I was looking for.
And Jennifer.
I don't intend to drag this on either. This is just, this is just to get the questions answered.
Okay, good. So thank you all for that. Oh, the whole circle. Thank you for coming to a resolution that seems very sensible and appropriate. So with that. All in favor of the of the motion, please, with the with those two modifications, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. That's excellent. And I. I I'm hesitant to extend, although I really do want to get to the second motion and I don't know whether we need another forty minute conversation about. But I'm hoping that we could just put that on the table. Yeah, I'm seeing a few head nods. So. Claire, I'm just going to turn to you to put it on the table.
Thank you, Mayor. So direct the city manager to provide counsel with a roadmap. For how the city can achieve decarbonization of the existing commercial and residential building stock by 2045. With particular consideration for how low income and historically marginalized households will be impacted and included in this process. This roadmap map must include strategies for decarbonization of rental housing stock. A draft of this roadmap shall be provided to council before June 30th, 2022.
Okay, Claire, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah. So again, I really want to thank thank Counselor Evans for his leadership in really spurring us. To take seriously some motions to move us forward on this. So this is. Patterned after but modified from his original motion. And again, I really tried to. Keep it as simple as possible, but I did call out. Low income and historically marginalized households. In there because of the imperative for us to consider environmental justice in this work. And I also called out rental housing because of the extreme challenges we've had and acknowledged over the years. In getting property owners of rental housing to participate in. Energy efficiency programs and other things that are out there already to help reduce energy consumption. So I called those two out and then. I I did get to speak with staff yesterday and my understanding is that the city manager will likely hire a consultant to. Develop this roadmap. My intention with the last sentence was to say that the roadmap doesn't have to be one hundred percent complete and ready for. For rolling out on June 30th, but that we would see, you know, a good draft of it by June 30th, because I know there's a lot of work involved.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike and then Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't know I was first there. That's awesome. Thank you, Claire. Does this include the possibility or the in the the S in parentheses when it comes to the like the last motion, the. Opportunity for us to discuss consequences in the same way the first motion was made?
I I apologize. I had a really important phone call. I.
That's perfectly okay.
Respond to.
I was just saying, is this like the first one where there's possibility for us to talk consequences that could take multiple work sessions?
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a roadmap, so it's not about. An ordinance or specific actions, but to to help us understand the how of of what we might do on this. If we want to go down this path.
So manager, with this and the last, it seems to me like we've given direction that that. That okays us to begin the process of of discussion of impact like we talked and Alan's perfectly correct. All all impacts are fine, you know? Did did is that the message you got clearly from the last motion and from this one? Should it pass?
I'm getting my direction from like the actual words of the motion. So yes, I'm hearing from the first motion that. The first work session will be very specific to the codes that need to change. You wanted it simple, but wanted to come back with. Follow up work sessions on what the impact of that might be. I will also note that when I was speaking earlier, I said I will still reach out to get answers to your questions. In the meantime, I just wouldn't be. Including it in that work session necessarily. The second one, you know, will be coming with that. Passage, we would be coming back with a roadmap that says, here's how you would do it. Similarly. We would need to have follow up conversations about and what are the impacts of that?
Thank you. I and for anybody else's concern, I'm not picking on Sarah because of any reason I pick on Sarah. I'm. Asking that to determine whether or not to vote on it, whether or not I think it'll be a thorough discussion. So thank you, manager, for playing along with my question as we do that. I appreciate it.
Okay, Alan and then Matt.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Claire and I discussed on this about how this ultimately plays out. And I think it was helpful for me in that discussion if we think of this in two parts. The the what we need to do to do this transition and then the how it actually gets done. Are two different parts. On on the how part, you ultimately what we need is a list of specific programs and costs and. Implementation plan and the staff and all that nitty gritty detail. That'll take and that'll take a good deal of time and a good deal of resources, way more than just six months to come up with that. So but if we. And I think what we'll see is a lot of actions actually end up resulting in net benefits instead of net costs, but that's in my experience. So. And and with if the roadmap focuses on the what we need to do to get there. So we'll come up with a list of seventeen things that we need to do in order to make this transition happen. That with the with that information, then we can prioritize our efforts on how we move forward. On each of those seventeen different items. And I I think. That's a really appropriate way to think about it. And I hearken back to the recent RG article about the magnitude and cost of the effort of transitioning. And that bears repeating and in and put some context here that the estimate for the cost of transitioning the city Seattle is eighty thousand natural gas customers is four billion dollars. And if you extrapolate that to Eugene's thirty thousand customers, that'd be like 1.5 billion dollars. I think that ends up being on the really high end. Scale of of costs. It doesn't take into consideration the benefits. But even if it's half or a third of that, it's still an institutional investment and we can't do that alone. It will take. Feds, state and other partners to make that happen. So. And a trans transition plan needs to take into consideration all of those details. I think it would serve us well if the roadmap. Ends up being a conversation about. All the things that we need to do and take into consideration in doing that. So that the the what we need to do as opposed to the. Implementation hows of how we do it. I think we focus on the what instead of the how. The how conversation will get us bogged down into the the details. When I think what Claire's trying to do here is kind of get this conversation going about what we need to do and create that roadmap. So I I don't I I don't want. There's no way you can come up with a detailed cost implementation plan and all the impacts and all that by June. It does. This is not going to happen.
Thank you. Matt and then Greg.
Thanks, Mayor. My question is for the maker of the motion. Counselor Cyret, would you welcome a friendly amendment? To include the word industrial for consistency sake, residential, commercial and industrial to match the first motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's the second and and Counselor Yea agrees as well.
Thank you.
And Greg.
Yeah, I I I think I think Matt covered my concern, except that I really wanted to call out small businesses. Because. The. The pandemic has had a really, really disastrous effect on small businesses. And the employees of small businesses. So I, you know, recently, you know, I know. A company that I'm not going to mention that, you know, had to do major layoffs and. Curtail some of their business activities because of the of the cost of. Addressing and reacting to the pandemic. So I want to make sure that we don't. Cause our small businesses to have. Any other negative impact that they already have experienced now. And in the future, because, you know, that's the backbone of our country and we really need to. Be aware of that, particularly in our community. So.
Claire?
Uh, yeah. So first, I want to apologize for having to step off the meeting for a minute there and and Counselor Zelenka answered. Counselor Clark's question much better. So I didn't, I did mean to actually say, you know, I I I see this as giving us kind of the whats. Of how we might move forward and then it's up to us to decide which of those pieces we want to dig into further. And then I appreciate Counselor Evans' concern about small businesses. I I see this. As kind of a long term project, you know, longer term in terms of our deliberation and decision making than the first motion. So I, you know, I don't, I I don't think the that we're going to be doing anything, you know, within the year even that is gonna. Impact folks on the ground in terms of increased burden. And we will need to think about, I mean, I think as a community, there are going to be increased costs for us out in the community. To address climate change and I think our role is, as Counselor Clark said earlier, is to really think about. How do we do that in the most wise way and mitigate harms to the most vulnerable?
Thank you. Mike, one more comment?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you. I don't and and thank you for your words, Claire. I don't just want to mitigate consequences, though. I do want to evaluate for wisdom in some cases. So for example. Randy brought up a concern that I have as well. He brought it up earlier in the first discussion and that is the. The issue of resiliency. So while I appreciate Alan's framework, that's not how I'm approaching these this this work. It's not as if it's a foregone conclusion and we're just looking for the details. Resiliency means, well, does that mean that no matter what, we're going to decide one fuel and one fuel only for our community moving forward? And that if we were to discover, for example, that we need. In case of natural disaster or some other calamity, we need the resiliency of a multiple fuel option. For the people of our community that we're just not going to do it. There's other pieces here that need to be evaluated. So I'll agree to vote for this for the sake of moving forward. And hearing what it takes and and discussing what the consequences of those actions would be. But not under the nature of a foregone conclusion if, you know, there is an obvious catastrophic. Potential consequence for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg, one more comment?
Yeah, um, I I want to make a suggestion in in terms of meetings. You know, we could have a series of ninety minute work sessions, you know. All over the place, but we could, we could consolidate this and have a longer work session. And what I'm talking about is. We usually have. You know, sessions at the beginning of the the calendar year to talk about what our goals are, what our needs are. What direction the city is going. I would be more than willing and happy to suggest that we. Do a long form, full day work session on this so that we can. Include a number of other pieces that we may miss or may fall off the table. Just a suggestion. You know, we all have busy schedules, but I think the importance of this is something that needs to be underscored. And that we really need to have a deeper conversation as we move forward with this. So just just a suggestion for twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Certified smart people.
Counselor, I I I appreciate that. I think there are any number of topics in which this council has felt like they could use at least a half day retreat and. And this certainly rises to that level. So I appreciate that thought and we can talk about that and. Also just want to point out that this conversation followed on the heels of Chelsea's. A broad conversation. And one of the things she mentioned is that that her team has spent two thirds of their time on community engagement. So as we can. Are considering, you know, how, what are the implications of some of these choices? That her team has set up a lot of those really effective engagement strategies. So there is an opportunity to talk about impacts on businesses with businesses. There are, there are a lot of systems that communication systems have now been set up to do a lot of that work. So I think that will be very helpful. And without delaying any further, let's have a vote on this second motion. So all in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. All opposed? Two. Okay, passes six to two. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience and your endurance, everybody, and we are adjourned. and we are adjourned.